Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I saw him on all the photos. He was like.
I'm about to. Sorry, you pissed out on the chat, mingle social life.
No, I didn't. I'm just not done yet.
No, well, for sake of, you know, city order and function. Okay. I hereby call the meeting of the Lafayette City Council to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the name of the soul, where liberty and justice are held.
Uh, Kennedy, can you call vote?
Yes. Uh, what's our policy?
Uh, they will be late.
Uh, Councilor Burrows.
Here.
Uh, Councilor Carswell.
Present.
Councilor Gilgan will be late and Councilor K here.
Mayor Malcomson.
Yeah, I'm here too. Good job. Yeah. Nailed it. Okay, now comes our time for citizen inputs. Um, we allow about thirty minutes, about three minutes per person, just to the point of um city or public input of non-agenda items is to get information on the record and to council. It's not necessarily the a time to hash out a whole topic. Um, and after that council sometimes ask clarifying questions and sometimes gives a directive to our city administrator. Um, and I will go down our list of people that have signed up and then if there's time left, I will open the floor to see if there's any last minute um things. Um, so Roger Webb, did you want to?
Yes, yes. And as I've ever prepared to hand out to everybody too.
Yeah, make sure Brandon gets a copy so he can put it in the record.
Should break it off, so hopefully have enough for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna get copies for them, just so they have them. Thank you.
All right, Mike, in a good spot here for the mic. All right. Hey, my name is Roger Webb and I live at one oh five oh five oh in northeast Bluebird Hill Lane, far enough Dunaway and outside of town. So here to talk about Dunaway Road today, which is the most popular hiking trail in all of Lafayette. So anybody who's been out on Sunset knows that people love to congregate there. Pioneer Cemetery has got gorgeous views of the coast range, vineyards, and uh people like to hike, walk their dogs out there, and I run into people running. I'd say roughly half the trips I go out with my daily adventures, I run into pedestrians in the roadway and uh I love them. Most part, everybody's super courteous. I'm here advocating for them. So there's an inherent safety issue that we have in a fifty-five mile outland country road with, you know, people in the roadway. There's no sidewalk. It ends there at Sixteenth Street. So, you know, what I'm trying to do is get a conversation started between the city, county, parks people, to do something first and foremost, address the safety issue. And then everybody knows I'm the big advocate of parks and I've been kind of preaching about this whole thing going on out the hills, and I don't think it's getting nearly enough attention. Uh, people like to hike at that uh Guadalupe Abbey. They got twelve hundred acres of short land, probably what, six miles of trail with access to the summit. But wedged right between Dunaway and there, there's two hundred and eighty acres of land that the warm springs, they bought it, it was like twenty fourteen. That land got flooded by the Bonneville Dam and they can uh they can buy parkland or conservation land outside of that. They bought our two hundred and eighty acres. So they're gonna rehabilitate some of it for Upland, okay, tap, cut out some of the duck furs. And uh their plan to include public access. So miles of trails that phase one's gonna connect to the Guadalupe Abbey and in their map that's there in that packet, they have a Dunaway Trailhead. So I'd love to see, not only the safety thing, but the county reach out and try and get some grant money, just like what we're doing with the river system, you know, interagency, you know, trying to draw some grant money, get some conversations started. And uh I know we have willing people like Casey's willing to talk, uh Oregon, well, Casey Cola. Um, I talked to Travis at Oregon Parks and Rec, not Oregon, sorry, uh Yanville Parks and Rec. He's willing to talk. We think that they might be able to interface with transportation to get some money. It's a pedestrian issue as well as a recreation opportunity. But if you look at Miller Woods, it's a hundred and thirty acres. So we have like twelve hundred acres, the Abbey, three hundred acres here. We could open the door to fifteen hundred acres of land for Lafayette residents to be able to hike, bike and get up there and enjoy it. Be a new gift to a new generation. So uh more parkland than we could ever hope to get with our park master plan revision, like Jim said. We need parks over acres. We're looking at half acre parks. Look at how many square miles that we could connect if we could get the county folks talking together. So what I'd like you guys to do is kind of join me in this conversation. Get Brandon to come to some meetings with me, with uh Yanville Parks people at times.
Thanks. So um, thank you. Just to make sure I understand this correctly, you're asking council to look at property for hiking trails outside of city limits and team up with other entities.
Yeah, we'd like to first talk to parks, Yanville Parks, see if we can draw the transportation people in. We're doing a parks master plan revision. I'd like to get people talking about the park opportunities north of there. You know, I'd love to see if everybody's looking for people.
So when you say.
Throw into the hat. But right now, we just want Brandon, hopefully to talk with Yanville Parks and Rec, look at the same thing we're doing with the steering committee. Like look for agency partners, grant money, something we can do to get a little bit of ownership behind this project. I'm not asking you to write a check.
Is that okay with the trail? Okay, a trail system for purposes of all this land?
Well, uh, what I understand is if we acquire the easement, that there's other grant money that can come. So the first step is getting the easement and the right to put a trail there.
Okay, so you're asking council to open up a discussion on creating an easement right outside of city limits.
For residents to use. And when Travis said Parks and Rec said he's willing to talk, but he's willing to talk if the city's willing to talk. So we need somebody from the city to meet with Yanville Parks and Rec. He said if we meet with him, that he can get the conversation forwarded to Yanville's transportation people to see if we can deal with it as a pedestrian issue.
Okay.
Issue, or see what we can do. But right now, I'd like to get Brandon's time to help me gather some information for feasibility.
Okay, so in order to have Brandon's time to work on that, you will need, council will need to give a directive to Brandon to work on time with that. But since you just presented a multiple page packet, my suggestion and council can
Yep.
Make different suggestion is for council to read this over. And if you have any interest in it, should be brought back up to reach out to Brandon.
And to me, I'm happy to come into questions. I'm familiar with all the land. I've actually keeping all these trails that are in the road, familiar with there and intimately familiar with the pedestrian situation.
Okay, so yeah, does that sound good to council that? Yes.
Um, I just had, I was just wondering, is, is uh, is that something that the city has authority to do, create an easement outside of the city limit?
So I asked Jim, he's our city planner directly about this. I asked him, my question was, can Parks SDC money be spent on a project outside of city limits, to which he answered yes. Doesn't mean that's the end authority on it, but I asked him that before I started this question. And then I don't expect the city to take this on alone either. But the city's a much stronger entity partner to have this conversation with the county than I am as an individual.
So does everyone feel okay with reading over this packet that Mr. Webb gave us? And if you have any interest in um spending city ti- time and money on working towards an easement within our parks program? For this? To reach out to Brandon to put on the agenda?
Good.
That's good.
Does that work?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Brandon, I'd like a uh, an estimate of how much time you think it would be uh have to put into. So two hundred and sixty. Just a, I'll give a general, I'll, I'll write it down in the results.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, which also could be something then to say, hey, Brandon, let's put this on the agenda and talk about what and we might, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, and then the other one on here is actually for something that's on the agenda. Um, any other citizen input to non-agenda items? Okay.
Thank you.
Kennedy, can I bring this back so it can go back a second? Okay, so um additions or deletions to the agenda? Um, with speaking with Brandon, it's not an addition or deletion, it's a changing of number seven from a work session with budget committee members to a budget presentation. And we do have some um budget members present. So just for transparency and clear as the uh public meeting laws. Um, does anyone have anything else?
So change it away from.
So instead of work session, it's a budget presentation. Number seven.
That's okay.
Okay, any other additions or deletions? Okay, um, so approval of October tenth meaning, meeting minutes. Are there any changes that need?
I saw a couple.
Wait, let's give two seconds for Karen to get back, because she's the one that's gonna.
She'll take it personally.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Under seven, I think it's seven, yes, seven D. Um, EPA lead and Cooper, okay, I think I still speak copper. And then down in the, what, three quarters of the way through administrator draw states, internally, there is a plan for a water line that breaks or leaks three times. Is that, um, this is really picky. Is, is it gonna be a water line that breaks or leaks three times? Is there, is there should be, there be a comment there? Or is it a water line that breaks or leaks three times? Does that have to break three times or leak three times to be replaced?
Oh, it's breaks or leaks. So it's one, it's a total accumulation of all three. So if it breaks once and then leaks twice, or if it leaks once and breaks twice.
If it's a water line that has our attention needed.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah. Anything else?
Um, one more thing.
Yeah.
I'm in the middle of page four.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand why this type of happened, but it says city administrative draft, city planner jacket, because the city owns property that is most likely affected by an under-year water plane. Would it be easier to take it permit by permit, question mark? That should be a period.
Gotcha.
So there.
Yeah, totally. Okay. Anything else? So I don't think any of those changes need to be brought back, just noted.
I move to approve the minutes from Thursday, October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to approve the minutes brought forward for um Thursday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Any further discussion?
I will be abstaining, but I'm not here for the meeting.
Okay, and I'm just gonna point out that the motion does not say with the added change of, but um, motion's on the table. So all in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Mayor Malcomson.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do the roll call voting?
Oh, yes, sorry. Forgot where you're doing that. Yes, roll call voting.
All right, uh, Councilor Paulson, present.
No.
No, you abstain.
Abstain.
Your vote.
You were gone, I think, last month.
Yeah, I was.
So.
Roll call voting.
We're doing roll call voting. It's.
Sorry. Uh, Councilor Paulson.
Abstaining.
All right. Councilor Burrows.
Aye.
Uh, Councilor Carswell.
Aye.
Councilor Gilgan.
Abstain.
And uh, Councilor K.
Aye. Okay, um, motion passes. Okay, um, present, so this is number seven, presentation of the budget committee. Um, or presentation of the budget. I'm just acknowledging that we do have some committee members or, yeah, in the audience. Thank you guys for joining us. And this is just a time for a presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay. Not a full discussion, right?
Correct. I think due to, I, I know when we had discussed last month how we wanted to do this, I think in the, in the fairness of time, um, we were just gonna do a shorter update compared to normal. Um, I based on feedback from the last time I did this presentation, I changed some of the colors. I wanted to be a little bit more um clear in some of the visualization that I'm presenting. So um as, before we start talking, um, just as FYI, the annual budget is gonna be the darker blue and the actual year-to-date is gonna be the lighter blue. Um, what, what we'll have, do we have it up and ready?
Yeah, down the bottom, uh, the brown pink. Yep.
You probably wanna answer the screen. I'm gonna share it to.
Have it been recognized then?
There we go. For those watching at, um, uh, where we at, transition?
Brandon, I appreciate the change in colors.
I have hope. There we go. Okay, so um, I'm gonna go through the unofficial, unaudited FY twenty-three, twenty-four. We're currently working on an audit right now, so none of these numbers are officially finalized until our auditor um uh completes the report. And they're also gonna work on the first quarter of uh this current fiscal year, FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, so I'll just kind of go through it quickly if there's any questions from the members of council um that need additional clarity or a, a question that I can bring back next time if it needs more research, I can do that. Um, but just to kind of start off with the general fund revenues for uh page one. Um, you see, uh, we have a bigger uh beginning fund balance um than projected last year. So we already, we have thirteen percent over uh the actual or the, the annual budget on that one. We had some additional revenues last year compared to what we had budgeted for the previous year. We tend to go more conservative in the budgeting of fees, just because um construction, gas, all these things are gonna be viable based on the conditions. So we tend to lean more conservative. A lot of those revenues are gonna be from the additional construction at Holt Homes, et cetera, throughout the year.
Brandon, you wanna change this?
Sorry. For those at home. Thank you. Um, and then uh, so total, our general fund last year was um about thirteen percent more than we actually had planned to out of the budget. So that's, that's uh, that's actually very well, very well. Um, the next one we have, we're gonna have just the administration. Nothing major there. Um, we only spent about sixty, we only spent about what, forty percent of the budget in administration last year. Um, planning, you see, we spent about thirty-five percent of the budget. Um, building, um, about sixty percent of the budget. We had, we had used court, court was pretty, was pretty lean last year. Only uh, well, it was projected to be leaner, but when we hired um the new uh judge, the um salaries and personnel costs went up a little bit. Um, compared to that, that was kind of communicated in the negotiation process. Nothing of concern, but it would, we had budgeted less than what we brought the new judge in for. Um, police. Uh, police was cutting it pretty close. We only had about seven percent of the budget left over. Um. This year's a little more accurate because we um accounted for the cola bump that they had received. Um, parks. Uh, we spent about three quarters of parks. Oh, my God, sorry, this thing is.
Brandon, this will be available.
Yeah.
Online, right?
Yeah, this is online.
So those watching from home, if we, we don't.
Can you measure this one for follow along? Sorry, I don't wanna take too much time. Um, parts, there, nothing really stands out there on fire. Um, we spent a little bit more on, on salaries, but it was made up with personnel. So that was even Steve in there. Um. And uh, we spent about ninety-five percent of the fire budget. Fire tends to be, fire and police tend to be the ones that um get the closest year over year. Works their full allocation of the budget historically in, in Lafayette. Um, when we look at revenues, we look at the sewer revenues last year. Uh, we had about ten percent more of revenues that we projected. So that's always good. Um, again, like with, with um, with uh franchise fees and permit fees, et cetera, we tend to be a little bit more conservative on the revenue.
Yeah. Was it up because of more people moving in than we had?
Yeah, and, yes, and, and usage, because it all, we, we factor those, that three-month usage pattern.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we know why it's been, it was up, not just a miscalculation. Okay.
Yes. Um, and with sewer expenditures, uh, we had about thirty-five percent of the budget left over this year. Or last year, sorry. Next page, on page six, uh, water. Um, water, we had about twenty percent left in the budget. You do, we do see that. It was our first, so about what, ten months of the budget, we have the total water debt surcharge, total there of two hundred and three thousand dollars. And then the water maintenance surcharge are about sixty-seven thousand dollars. Those are obviously the fifteen and five dollar charges that are going to the MAC Water and Light debt and to build the contingency fund in the waters, in the water uh enterprise fund. Um. So um expenditures were really good on there. We only used about fifty-four, we had about forty-five percent of water uh that was used. Um. Below that on streets, um, we actually received more in the state funding that we had projected. And then so um, we saw about ten percent growth in the revenue um on the streets than we projected. Uh, streets expenditure, uh, we, about half of the budget was used. Um, sewer SDCs, this is where, again, we, we contribute a lot of this to the construction. We had about an eighteen percent increase from where we thought we were gonna actually have versus what we actually did brought, bring in. So uh, we projected about uh nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in revenues. We brought in one point one seven. Um, sewer STC expenditures, uh, we used about ten percent. Obviously, most of that was gonna be towards the um, uh the wastewater treatment facilities updates and some of the um updates we had during the year. So it was minimal expense on the sewer STC side. Um, obviously, most of that's gonna be going to any future enhancements of the plant. Um, and then the uh wastewater facilities plan. Um, water STC revenues, uh, we see, we see almost forty percent increase from what we projected. Obviously, that is gonna be going towards the building out over at Holt Homes. Um. And then the expenditures, we only use about twenty percent of the STC fund. Most of that was to be contributed to the water meter rollout. Um, street SDCs, uh, we got about an extra twenty twenty-two percent that we had budgeted for, obviously, of course, due to, to the, the, the construction, um, over at Holt Homes. Um, so we see, we didn't really spend anything, six thousand dollars last year on the street STC. And parks, uh, parks we brought in more, about twenty-five percent more than we projected. And then we didn't really spend, we didn't spend anything last year. Um, and uh, that five hundred thousand dollar park STC is up, you know, obviously going towards anything that would come out of uh the master plan, the park master plan revision directives. So um that was kind of twenty-three, twenty-four and a hunch. Any questions, any areas that you may need more clarity on?
Can you just? Because of the past water stuff, when you're saying, oh, the SDCs are up and what's expenses, that has nothing to do with how we calculated the.
Correct. It's, it's, it's its own enterprise fund. It can only be used for improvements um or reimbursement of capacity. Um, the water rates have nothing to do with the SDCs.
Coming from SDC, they're coming from new developments. It's not coming. Yes.
And specifically the development.
Yes. I'm just, I just wanna make that very clear that this, when we say, oh, we it's, it's not, oh, we brought in more from water bills or whatever it's.
But we did a little, right? The rate in fees revenue, it looks like we're about a hundred and eighteen K above budget. This, I, I don't wanna like drag out a whole conversation, but just preliminary, like going into next year's budget cycle. Is there the possibility of you marking that for early payment out of the debt obligations?
Possible. Possible.
Which will cover around eight.
If you recall this year, we paid a little bit extra on uh one of our loans. Um, I'd like to do that again. But I also know, and uh Mayor Malcomson can kind of uh talk to this if you want to now, but we had our LOC meeting last, last week. And there's probably about sixty percent or so of cities that are looking at major shortfalls coming up. So I think we want, as we talk next year's budget, we wanna see how we wanna project, yeah, how we wanna project future, just in case any type of revenues start to fall short, or obviously, there's some um tax and stuff that may happen at legislative level. They're trying to get appetite for, but uh we'll, we'll talk about that more in a budget season after coming about, extra payments for loans and whatnot.
Yeah. Again.
All right. And then um, so we just finished up our first quarter of the fiscal year, uh, September thirtieth. So all these are gonna be um as of September thirtieth. Um, the general fund revenues are always gonna be wonky because um, as mentioned before, a lot of those transfers happen throughout the year. Or the, the auditor does actually those transfers and they work with Jamie. So the, the general fund revenue is always gonna be a little weird mid, middle of the year. But as we get into the projected budget around uh March or April, you'll actually get a clearer picture of where those um year-to-dates are actually are at. Um, expenditures on the general fund side, I mean, uh, we use about ten percent of the budget. I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty good compared to the um, the monthly rate um over the twelve months. Uh, planning, uh, we haven't used much in planning. We forecasted, we did budget a little bit more this year in planning because of some of the master planning discussions. And so we, we, we did add a little bit more to that this year. So uh, that was plan four.
So a light early, a light first quarter because we're planning.
Yes, because now as you see with the master planning stuff and everything going on, the transportation system planning.
Usually come out a quarter at a time.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, building, we're um, you know, at about eighty-five percent of our budget left. We're on track for that. We'll start to see more um more as phase five, the halt develops, we'll start to see more and more um building permits come in. The planary is pretty much done, but the permits for, you know, um um plumbing, you know, um HVAC, vinyl, roughens, all that good stuff. Um, court, um about uh, we've used about twenty percent of the budget so far. Nothing really stood out there. We are, we have seen an increase in um uh speeding tickets. Obviously, you've all seen recently in some of the uh packets. I mean, we, we continue to be one of the higher um cities in the county with um speeding tickets.
Probably the, it's twenty miles an hour, which is ridiculous. Let me just point out for the record. I love it goes to forty to twenty, twenty to sixty.
General fund police still working where, uh, we're still looking to where we need to be on that. Um, I do know that um going ahead of next year's discussions, correct me if I'm wrong, sheriff, I think there the union negotiation is getting voted in on here in the next, either this week or next week, correct?
Correct.
So we'll have final number, I think a three-year cycle, two or three-year cycle?
It's a three-year uh contract.
Yes. So we'll have three years kind of built out to where we know where we will be with police services. Um, so we'll have that, we'll have better forecasts for the next couple of years. Um, general fund parks, uh, we've only used about nineteen percent of that. Nothing really stands out there. Um, some of the salaries are gonna be a little lighter uh because uh with Chad leaving, his position's still unfilled. And then uh, we had Public Works, um, we had some Public Works transition. So we'll definitely see some salary relief. That doesn't mean it's gonna be salary taken away long-term as we still figure out how that um position will be filled.
There's some contracting going on.
Yeah.
To help, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, because we still have Chad overseeing our system, but the full cost of his salary is still kind of out there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, general fund fire, um, it's probably gonna keep pace how it does every year. We had about thirty-four percent of the uh uh the budget spent on there. Uh, when it comes to the enterprise funds, sewer revenues, uh, it's projected where we're at. We've got about nineteen percent of the projections there so far. Uh, expenditures are pretty light so far um on all of the operations, about eighteen, fourteen percent of the budget. So I don't see us using all of the sewer funds this year like we did last year. Um, water revenues, we'll see uh water debt surcharge. So this is where we'll see the full picture of the full fiscal year. I think we had about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars mapped out the second year on that. We have seventy thousand dollars. Times that by four, it'll be about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So the projections of the, the MAC Water and Light Service Surcharge Fee um is online with what was projected when that uh communication was put out a year and a half ago. And same thing with the uh water maintenance surcharge. That's projected to be where we need to be um for what we projected to build up that contingency fund.
So yours and Counselor Gilgan's calculation.
So yours and Counselor Gilligan's calculations were correct?
Uh, as of right now, yes, on, on the average number of houses and the, the users and houses and the building and the, the progression of that, it all looks to be even keel right now.
Perfect.
So, you'll do see on the water expenditure, it does look a little wonky, but we added the contingency fund this year, we carried that over. Some of the debt service has yet to be paid out, um, those things, those transfers get done throughout the year with the auditor and Jamie. So that'll kind of level out with by the third quarter or so. Um, street revenue, um, and street expenditures look pretty good so far. Obviously, a lot of those street funds you see over um, and capital outlay are going to be for, for Bridge Street, which we'll have another conversation on here in a second. Um, nothing really stands out there. Um, sewer SDC revenues, obviously, we haven't seen much, um, in terms of the permits for this year. But as we progress, we'll start seeing some more of that, um, even out on what we project for the, um, SDC, um, growth. Um, same thing with the water SDCs, not real much there so far to, uh, to report. Got about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in water SDCs right now, a little bit more in, of over a million in sewer SDCs. Um, street SDC, same thing, uh, we got about one point six million there in the capital alley, nothing's really been touched yet. And, uh, same thing with the park SDC. Um, haven't really gotten, haven't gotten much, but we also haven't spent much, we have about seven hundred thousand dollars that we projected this year to have in there. Obviously, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, any deliverables that come out of the park master plan, we would utilize, um, the park SDC funds.
With keeping in mind that there's not much more growth available.
Correct, there's not much more growth.
Will not be SDCs coming in.
Correct, not, not, not until we, um, expand into the UGB and then do any more UGB expansion.
Yeah.
Uh, so as we look at this year's capital improvement program, the yellow will, should be completed. Um, if not already completed, the reservoir should be up in January. Um, we've got the wastewater facilities plan update, um, Chad, myself and Gordon are working with the EQ to kind of get their draft approval before we bring it to council for any approvals or any type of conversation around that. Um, we purchased a back to trailer already, that's already been done, and then, um, the INI is being scheduled out. So the only things left hanging there are going to be the pedestrian crossing, which I mentioned, uh, in my weekly wrap-up a few weeks ago, we did not get that grant from, uh, the United States Department of Transportation. Looking at some of the. I wanted to manage that a little differently because we have Jim there and stuff.
Yes.
So, um,
Okay.
If you have any questions, email me or anything on the budget.
Okay.
Anything additional?
Discussion items, Yamhill County Sheriff's Office Service Update with Sheriff Elliot. Thank you for waiting so long to address us. And welcome, welcome.
Is it hot in here?
It's hot everywhere.
No, it's amazing. It's perfect. I have to decide with Counselor Paulson on there.
What's that one? More handouts.
Yeah, we love you.
Yay.
What about the colorings? Yeah.
Appreciate it.
This is different than your normal monthly update. This is, uh, encapsulating the fiscal year July one of twenty twenty-three through June thirty of twenty twenty-four.
Why we get the sheriff's stack?
Uh, so, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you tonight, uh, it's important to me to ensure that you guys uh, get updates and information about the service that you're paying for with the sheriff's office, uh, obviously we serve as your police department for the city of Lafayette, and uh, I, I am going to be meeting with all of the cities that we provide service to, uh, the, these updates will come to you more timely in the future, so that it's closer to the end of the actual fiscal year. As, uh, City Administrator Dross mentioned, uh, we do have already some preliminary information that we'll be able to provide much earlier on in the budget process next year. And, uh, so I look forward to, uh, working with you all. Uh, if you refer to the packet, uh, I just wanted to point out, uh, that we have been providing service to Lafayette since nineteen eighty-nine, so uh, you are one of our longer-term, uh, contracts for policing service uh, that, that we have, uh, and just a little historical information, you can see there, um, what the contract provided for as far as the number of FTE. So from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-five, you had one full-time employee. From ninety-six to thirteen, uh, you had one and a half. And I have Captain Whitlow here with me, who is our enforcement or patrol division, uh, commander, and he may be able to speak to it, uh, more than I can, but I do know for, uh, some period of time that there was a cooperative agreement between the city of Dayton and the city of Lafayette where each of the two paid for a half, and that's where you wound up with the one point five for a number of years, uh, so the deputy would work, uh, half of the week in one city and half of the week in the other. And then since twenty fourteen, you've had the, uh, the two FTE that you currently have. You can see the calls for service trend, uh, from ninety-five to twenty twenty-four. That is a substantial difference.
Hundred and two calls, what happened? So he's grown. It's imagine, I've had.
I'm just encouraged that the welfare, welfare murder part is still at zero.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's a good stat to, to.
That's spectacular.
So these are the, these are the numbers, just a side-by-side showing what was going on in nineteen ninety-five and what was going on in twenty twenty-four, so.
It makes sense, though, I mean, the city's grown a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it has, yeah.
What's a non-reportable offense?
So non-reportable offenses, uh, typically are going to encapsulate, uh, incidents or reports that there isn't, um, necessarily, uh, reportable crimes, so a lot of information reports where people, you know, are wanting to provide us with specific information, there's non-criminal events like non-criminal verbal disturbances. Uh, you also get some of your status offenses like runaways and MIPs and stuff like that, lower-level offenses that are encapsulated in that. So the next page shows just overall what the activity has been over the last four fiscal years. Um, and overall, you know, it's, it's, um, up since, you know, the nineties, but, uh, calls for service last year, thirty-three hundred and eighteen, uh, four hundred and twenty-two cases taken, and you see the footnote there at the bottom, and a hundred and forty-five total arrests in the city of Lafayette.
We're also looking at COVID and then post-COVID.
Correct. The next slide or the next page, uh, which is a circular chart is really one of the primary reasons that I wanted to come in and address you all this evening, I mean, you obviously deserve to have an update as to, to what you're paying for. Uh, but you can see that overall, in the last fiscal year, if you just look at the large chart, um, fifty-one percent of all of the calls and activity in the city were handled by your two deputies. And forty-seven percent were handled by rural deputies.
So like fifty-one percent of the call came in while we had someone here.
Correct. And so the remainder of those calls, that forty-seven percent are coming in at times when you don't have your deputies on shift. Uh, two deputies obviously is not going to cover twenty-four, seven, seven days a week.
With three, just curious.
I haven't run the numbers to see what the, what the difference would be, um, but, you know, we'll get to some of the data in some of the further slides that show, you know, the call activity, time of day, day of week and what's going on, but certainly, uh, any addition into the number of FTE is going to directly impact the amount of times that the rural deputy has to come when the calls in the city of Lafayette.
We have, we have two forty-hour week deputies, there's a hundred and sixty-eight hours a week, so.
Yeah.
People we don't, we're eight hours short.
I'm doing the long hand on that and you're just doing the short.
Saturday.
Yeah, so we would need like four.
Well, we have deputies less than fifty percent of the time and handling more than fifty percent of the calls, so.
Well, technically, if you look at the subset, um, of the fifty-one percent that your Lafayette deputies are handling, um, eleven percent of the time, they receive backup or assistance by the rural deputy. So when you kind of factor those two together, um, it is a significant call volume and a significant workload for the rural deputy. And that's, uh, you know, something that I just bring to your attention, because that rural deputy that's coming in to handle those calls in Lafayette is the one deputy that's responsible for the entire North District. So they are responsible for all of the rural county from the South City limits of Gaston from the West County line past Yamhill to Wilsonville Road and Rex Hill. And so they're spending a significant amount of time here in Lafayette. And that is, uh, directly impacting the service that I can provide to those rural county residents that live out in that portion of the county.
Is there a way to get this of the other cities you service to, something that, like, tells us, like, are we using more of the rule than they are, that just the trend, like?
I can provide that to you. Uh, the next page is the top twenty calls for service by type. Uh, I believe it was referenced earlier, uh, you can see that by far and away in twenty twenty-four, traffic stops were the, uh, primary calls. Uh, having worked here when I was a sergeant overseeing the deputies that worked in Lafayette, um, I obviously will attend and present to the council, and consistently, traffic was one of the biggest complaints, uh, that at least come into our office, specifically speeders on Bridge Street. Um, and to some extent, Third Street, uh, the, the reference to the twenty mile an hour speed limit, uh, I don't have the data to tell you what, what that change in the speed limit has resulted in with respect to enforcement stops. What I can tell you anecdotally of a vast majority of these are cell phone. Uh, the, one of your deputies in particular, um, the word is out, do not be talking on your phone when you drive through Lafayette. It's just the way that the city is set up, he can park right here behind City Hall, he's not visible until it's too late and everybody's on their phone. And so, uh, the vast majority of these are driving while using a cell phone.
No hands free.
Uh, the next one is just the same, uh, information represented a little bit differently as far as, you know, what the top twenty call types are and how much of a percentage of time, uh, those calls represent when you're looking at all of the activity here in the city.
What is silver, civil paper?
Civil paper is, uh, when we have to come out and serve subpoenas, restraining orders, eviction notices.
Okay, I had just never seen it written like that before. Yeah, makes sense. Such a pretty.
Yeah, Brandon, did you go? Yeah, Brandon, did you go first? You wouldn't have to follow these charts.
His pie charts are very fancy, very pretty and very accurate. We love you, Brandon.
Uh, the the next page uh is a representation of all of the calls uh distributed throughout your week. So you can see uh when your calls are happening, on what days of the week.
He's going to work on Monday.
What's that?
It's a nobody's going to work on Monday.
We typically don't talk about the deputy's schedules uh publicly, just because there's certainly.
Nobody was going to work on Monday because there's only nine percent of calls on Monday.
Uh, you know, we we, there's a, there's a reasoning behind uh not letting advertising when when your staff are not working. But it is interesting, uh, compared to a lot of the other cities, it's a fairly even distribution. Uh, so you know, really, I think the makeup of the city where you're seeing a lot of residential, um, you know, those things are generally pretty consistent, uh, whereas when you have industry uh where you're seeing uh some of the activity that goes along with that, and it can drive uh things to trend one direction or another uh on certain days of the week. So a lot of uh like the call types that we see um down in the West Valley where you have the mills and you have uh the RB plant, uh, you have obviously people commuting, going back and forth to work, they're working late shifts, they're working, you know, swing shifts. So there's just more activity going on, uh, and if they're working on the weekends, you know, the mills are running seven days a week. You know, that can influence some of that. The next page, uh, just again, some of the same information, but representative of uh what you see in your monthly reports that you get uh that show uh what is going on in your city.
There's no arson.
Not this year.
That's spectacular.
Or murders.
When you got the message, sure.
And then the last slide. This is one that has always been uh interesting. If we see uh the numbers inverse, uh, we get a lot of questions as to why so many people are getting a break. I suspect that there would be a lot of folks wondering why so many traffic stops result in a citation. Uh, certainly, there are a number of factors that come into play, not the least of which is the discretion of the deputy that is uh making that enforcement stop. But uh, in the last two years, uh, we have made a really dedicated effort when we receive uh grant funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation to do some of our special emphasis work, whether that be seatbelt enforcement, cell phone distracted driving, DUI, uh, crosswalk enforcement. And we are bringing those uh efforts to the cities that we provide service to. So we have had uh a lot of time spent in the last year uh with folks working uh special emphasis overtime to address those specific driving behaviors. And certainly of those special emphasis enforcement details, you do see a higher concentration of citation over warning uh because we are specifically targeting problematic behavior and trying to address it, so.
And kudos to the team for the crosswalk enforcement. There was definitely a couple near misses, one of our staff members almost got hit by somebody, I almost did, somebody on the phone. And I know both officers, I I think I sort of stopped three or four people in a span of like a day, so.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so first of all, any questions about the annual report or any of the data that's contained in here? Questions about what we're doing at the Sheriff's Office or what this represents?
Yes, I know you, and I wouldn't want you to talk schedules here, but obviously you take this data into account with the scheduling of the city.
We do, so we we take the data into account, we take some of the information. Uh, historically, a lot of the, the scheduling uh considerations in Lafayette are all around washer. Yeah, we get a ton of requests and feedback um from folks that want to see the deputy around the school at certain times.
Sure.
And so that that does play into the scheduling.
Sure. And we recently changed one, I think that was kind of a derivative from staff saying, hey, we probably need to see this more. And I think it's reflective on.
Yeah.
Some of your stuff, so that was kind of a staff-induced one.
So. So as I referenced in in the presentation, um, I'm just here because I need to put it on your radar uh about the the amount of time that my rural deputies are having to spend in the city. Uh, certainly, I recognize that these contracts are very expensive for the cities. They are not small ticket items. Um, but it is uh my responsibility to ensure that I'm providing service, not just to the cities, but also to the rural residents of the county. And so I would ask that as we head into budget discussions and we're able to provide you with some of the information that you can start planning, that you have that in the back of your mind, that uh your city has grown a lot and the the busyness of the city of Lafayette has increased significantly. And that is reflected in what we're seeing. And uh, we want to be good partners and we want to strategize ways that we can provide uh a better service um without impacting uh folks that don't live in Lafayette and without impacting your budget in a way that uh really is constraining to the city.
So it's been ten years since we've upped our contracted FTE.
Correct.
Do you have a recommendation?
I don't have a recommendation. Uh, I mean, typically, you know, if we're going to talk about wants versus needs, uh, and uh, we're going to talk about reality. Um, you know, I I think that when you're talking about such a large ticket item as like adding an FTE, you have to go incrementally, so I really would not be um asking the city to consider anything more than adding one uh just to give us a data point and an opportunity to to tabulate as you previously asked, you know, what would it look like? And how would it affect things?
So if four point two, we would need to have somebody here twenty-four hours, four point two, it looks like.
Um, yes and no, because you have to factor in that they get sick time, vacation time, paid leave, Oregon, family leave.
And administrative work.
And administrative work.
Patrol car.
Do their training every year to continue their certification. So um, you know, it really lately has become, you almost have to overfill by one in order to see a true um equivalent because of the amount of time that uh, you know, folks aren't at work.
Brandon, how much is our sheriff's? Budget?
By day, it's four, with YCOM, I think it's four. Yeah. About the presentation. Four sixty-two, and that includes the um our YCOM payout. I was actually talking to Mayor Malcolmson last week at the LOC meeting and I was, I actually asked Emily to, if we can all kind of be together here soon, and she responded to that. Because I, we're seeing, and this is nothing against you, because I know you you have, you have employees you have to develop and you have training and you have, people got to take leaves, but I, it seems like the sometimes it's known more when the offices aren't here than when they're here. And I know that was going to be, I think, a negotiation point, how we, how can we make sure there's more coverage? But then I know added coverage means added employee expense means we're not hiring the person. It's going to be the Sheriff's Department. And I was actually going to have a discussion to see what the appetite was for um what if we wanted to go that route, what it looked like.
I think to have that conversation, um, the information that the mayor requested with uh other cities.
Comparison to other cities.
That would be helpful, um, as well as, and I know this is public information we can get, but also just what what their, what their contracts look like.
So your contract just for the Sheriff's Office is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars and eleven cents per year uh for this current fiscal year, not last year than this reporting is for. Um, so you have your YCOM uh subscriber dues uh on top of the policing services contract.
Those three seventy-nine.
It's just, it's just.
Your two deputies.
Okay.
Two, though, like, they need to stay within it.
No, I know.
And so.
Well, and it's still contracting, another one is still cheaper than us creating our own police.
Well, my thing on adding another one, though, it's like, is that going to really make a difference? Because sometimes there needs to be two responding officers.
So uh, I will just provide you with some really rough data that uh the only other city that uh has a contract larger than a two-position is the city of Sheridan. They are a three-position contract. Their contract this current year is five hundred and forty-six thousand, hundred and forty-six dollars.
I mean, it's hard to say size in terms of population.
Correct.
They count the, that'll inmate, but yeah.
But the uh, the scheduling in Sheridan, um, you know, we we have a lot more overlap where there are two of them on at the same time. And so we've structured the the schedule in Sheridan to meet those specific needs in the city of Sheridan. Uh, but obviously, when you have three people, you try to find the balance of spreading them out, enough that you cover more hours of the week, but you also build in some overlap so that there's more than one here. When you have your peak call times, you know, typically in your evenings, when you see the most domestics, when you see the most um, you know, what should be two officer responses. So rather than having the deputy come from Newburgh or Yamhill uh to come in and and provide that backup, then you have that built in within uh the city here.
And I know some cities, so 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 some cities are doing a couple of things. One thing I heard at the LOC meeting was, I I don't, I wouldn't recommend this, but they're just saying we're not paying police services anymore. It's only going to be responding by phone calls, so there's no proactive enforcement. Uh, but I also know there's a couple of cities, I want to say Slaton's one of them, where they actually have a backup partner. What that looks like, what I mean backup, if 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 it's not conducive with the county, maybe it's, hey, McMinnville, do they have somebody they can send to us halftime? And as 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 an added option, the things that we can think about if 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 there was an appetite for more police services in town that if they couldn't help us because of their bandwidth, there's other o- opportunities, I think that could happen, but.
Matt would not have that capacity to help out with that.
Okay.
Just saying.
Okay.
That I heard.
Oh, okay. I haven't imploring it at all, but I just know that like, you know, we're pretty much Dundee to Newburgh, it sends to what we are, McMinnville, there was a police officer on the east part of town, but I mean, just options to think about as we, you know.
Okay, so are you, is it, is this is a discussion needing that information just to see how we're.
Probably get it by the January meeting, right? Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'll be able to get you the rest of the city.
Yeah.
We're not quite done developing all the cities, you guys are the first one that I have come to.
But something that probably council should have a discussion before budget season of, if we feel that we're and if we have a shortfall or if we feel, you know, what what are stances?
I think the comparison needs to be three deputies versus two with paying more for the rural deputy.
So, yeah, let's put that back on the calendar or on the agenda before budget season.
Well, and just in closing, what I would like to say is, you know, I alluded to it uh a little bit earlier that there's no call that goes unanswered in Lafayette, regardless of whether your deputies are on duty or off duty. Uh, we come and handle those calls. Uh, there's no uh waiting until the next time one of them's on duty. Uh, whoever is on duty at the time, if it's not one of yours, the rural deputy is coming and handling the call. And that's just uh the way that we have approached all of our contracts uh that we, we have that partnership. Uh, the challenge for me right now is that I'm starting to get questions from the rural residents about why they never see a patrol car. To be candid, it's because they're in the cities, because that's where the call concentration is.
Yeah.
Uh, and so it's trying to find that equal balance where, you know, they do have some more time to go patrol in the rural areas, but um, you know, we're, we're not saying that, you know, we're not going to answer calls. Um, it's just trying to find something that's more equitable. Um, both to provide a a better service here in the city, but also not be pulling my rural deputy to constantly be here in the city to handle those calls.
Yeah, I guess we as a city need to evaluate if we're, you know, if we're comfortable with what's going on and not what our options are.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone need a break or are we good?
We're good.
Okay.
She speaks for her.
She does. It's not too hot, we're good, okay. Uh, Parks Master Plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So um in front of you is what was talked about last week, I mean, last month. Um, as a follow-up to the park survey, uh, we had the town hall um a few weeks ago on October thirtieth. And um it was very sparsely attended. I think the most of the people who were there were going to be either city staff or city adjacent. Um, so I think most of the feedback that we got when we were asking residents to um rate the importance of this or that, and we got two or three responses, Kennedy, correct? Nothing more than, I think, three on any of the questions. Um, so that leads us to where we're at today. I I still think we still need to have additional community engagement. Um, but I think this may need to be more geared from the council. And I don't know if this is going to be the meeting where we want to maybe discuss it for a few, or if you all want to take time and and grade some of these things and let me know, but I, I think going forward, we need to know what the importance of these are on the scales of what what's your most important, your second most and your least important? Because then we can take that data and really curate to see what we want to do and what's actually practical. And then maybe bring that to the community. Um, and what I mean, for instance, you know, what park do you see most important? What's what's park do you want to get done first, Terry, Commons, or Veterans? And start grading these as a whole as a council, and then maybe that can kind of give us another push to bring out some information to the community, hey, this is what council's thinking. They took your answers, they saw what you all felt. Now here's what they feel is their most important as 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 a group. And then maybe we take that back to the community and say, okay, let's whiteboard this, what do you feel? Do you think this is practical? Do you support this? Do you support that? I'm feeling that we may need to gear the community more.
Do we read the room correctly with this survey? So I had asked um Brandon to bring it back to the meeting tonight um because I didn't feel comfortable handing the survey results over for interpretation to the Planning Commission. I feel that their position is to take those directives and work through the Planning Commission, the things that need to change in the Parks Master Plan. But how a park is going to be used, that should still come from council as we are the citizens representative, we're the elected. Um, and that these three parks are a big identity for what our town is. Um, and that my number one thing when I talk to Brandon, and this could just be me, is I would like to see all three parks looked at together of what we're going to allot them for before, like instead of just working on Terry Park or working on Veterans Park, go, like, looking at that as one big project and saying here because maybe a basketball hoop is wanted in bulk, but where's it best at? Instead of, oh, shoot, we already built it there and we probably should have put it there and that could have been this.
And that's the point of the Planning Commission. And if they're basing it off of the citizen survey, based on what they're saying, I think it needs to come to the council, but I don't think that council should have full control over that.
Well, I think it's important that the Planning Commission knows what council will and will not approve. And I think it's a waste of money for, for anything like for the city planner, um, for Brandon's time.
I'm not saying the city planner or Brandon's time, I'm saying the planning.
Yeah.
Sounds like a joint session.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, I'm always down for extra meetings, but.
Way to go.
I I think a, a open discussion is definitely, I think, would be called for.
And Council Gilgan's been on the planning commissioner's side before, so I'm sure, you know, you have your your planning commissioner's previous mindset there, so I don't know if that would really.
No, I mean, I think it's a planning commission thing more than a council thing, but if, you know, but if council wants to really get ahead of it and say like, here are the things we're thinking and it has to be passed us anyway, maybe it's a joint session kind of thing.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, which I feels.
Sorry.
Coming into the holidays and then.
We don't have enough money in the budget right now to do major park renovations.
No, but we have.
No, but we can start.
Planning for it, but I I think we all need to be realistic here.
Yeah, but we also need to know what we're going to chip away at.
I totally agree with that, I'm just saying, I don't think there's a necessity, we need to get it done right now.
Yeah, we don't need to get it done.
We don't have the money for it.
So bring it, so.
Should I?
January is going to be crazy with new um, with all the beginning of the year stuff that happens anyway, so maybe February, March. And I feel like part of it is the citizens are, even though nothing is overnight, I don't want them to feel like this is tabled too long. Since we brought out a survey to them. Since we brought out a survey to them.
Honestly, I doubt they're gonna be thinking about the perks during the holiday season.
No, I know through the holidays, yeah.
They're probably familiar with the speed of government.
Yeah.
I feel a little bit confused because part of it is, well, we want to look at all three parts as a whole, and then you're like. But I want to focus on what we're gonna do at each part.
Well, because if they have it right, because I I think if, if I'm wrong. I think like if we look at them too individually, it would be silly to have like a basketball court at all three, but no X, Y, or Z, right? So like, how do they complement each other?
Exactly, yeah.
I think it's more complementing each other.
I think that they to go along with complimenting each other, then have a plan, we do this one first.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
So, and yes, they need to complement each other because we're making the ci- city better, the city parks system better.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll look at a couple of dates for February then, and I'll get with um Jim and I'll bring those back, maybe December.
We'll see the two more years coming.
Brandon, they're gonna work on your schedules.
Well, we can always.
Season.
I make anything work, ma'am.
I know, you're awesome.
He's still young and.
I still get it when he talks about the the snail's pace of government, when he knows Lafayette's government is. May not be the best, but it's very responsible.
Well, and Brandon, I would be okay with doing a joint session. Paired up with a council meeting too.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look at some. Do you have comments, sir? I'm just, I'm just joking, sir. It's my last day in the thirties, so.
Your staff very fast for the size of staff you have, you can say that. You move very quickly.
Yeah, well, in about four hours, he turns old, so he might start really. Would that have be almost forty birthday, Brandon?
That's why I said, enjoy this now, because I'm getting tired of things that you're gonna know could hurt.
I already promised them this meeting wouldn't go till midnight tonight, so. Okay, so are we good with Parks Master Plan tonight? Um FEMA.
Lovely things in the news lately about FEMA.
Brandon, I will hand this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm actually gonna pass this over to Jim. I know um you all have the staff report. There were some extra items um. That were added to the staff report post Jim and I's um attendance at the two FEMA meetings online. On, I think, the thirtieth and the thirty first. So I'll kind of let you kind of cap it off, Jim, since you're the pro with this, that won't jargon it up like I will.
Thank you, Brandon, and are we okay? Can everybody hear?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, the one-page summary that you have. Basically provides some information in the middle of the page about the model ordinance option. And then the next option below that is the permit by permit. And below that then is the prohibit development option. So with the model ordinance. Uh which is what the recommendation is, the staff recommendation. Uh there is actually a model, a. I guess you could say a draft model ordinance, but uh Region Ten is coordinated with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. And uh DLCD, the department. Has for many years had a model ordinance. Every few years, they update it. And their last update was in twenty twenty, so Region Ten used that twenty twenty version to. Create a model ordinance that would include the things that it that are necessary. To address these pre-implementation compliance measures. And make sure that if a city adopts the model ordinance, then everything that needs to be covered will be covered. Uh in that ordinance, there are. The mitigation ratios and there's a uh. Oh gosh, the riparian. Uh our geez, anyway, riparian habitat setback of a one hundred and seventy foot distance. And so it has in it some of these detailed things. That an applicant would need to address if they're going to develop in the one hundred year floodplain. Uh in the permit by permit process, there is no model ordinance. And the Region Ten folks do not intend to on creating one. And so uh with no guidance, so to speak. That's one reason why the model ordinance is recommended. The permit by permit process would require each person or each development to include a. Habitat assessment and mitigation plan, and so it truly would be permit by permit. Uh the prohibit development, that is another item that the Region Ten folks are not going to provide. A model uh ordinance or even model language. They indicated that they would provide guidance, either over the phone or via email. And actually, the prohibit development. Option uh just on the face of it, appears that a city, if they had tried that approach. Could have some property right takings issues right away. And particularly for Lafayette. There's, I believe it's seventeen properties that have some portion of their land. In the one hundred year floodplain. In almost every case, it's just a little bit or a sliver. And. The one owner that is affected the most is the city. Because the city Public Works property where the sewage lagoon is, for example. That's in the one hundred year floodplain. If in the future the city were to. Want to expand and add a lagoon or expand the existing lagoons. Then the city's floodplain regulations would be saying no development in the floodplain. Uh it could be possible to have no or adopting, no development. Uh option, but you would definitely want to somehow exempt out. A major development like expanding a sewer lagoon. Uh that seems to be inconsistent with allowing no development. But then, yes, you can, if you're the city, have a major development. You'd still need to mitigate and that sort of thing. But anyway, uh it just with the prohibit development option and the permit by permit option. There's some inherent issues that are problematic. And if you adopt the model ordinance, then we already have a model to be used. And it has buy-off by DLCD. So when someone were to, if someone were to to develop in the floodplain. Then they would, as part of submitting their floodplain development permit. They would include the information in the work that is required by the model ordinance. I mentioned the floodplain development permit because that is the document that, when approved by the city. Actually allows the development in the floodplain. Luckily, like I mentioned, almost all of these seventeen lots, it's just a tiny amount of their property. And when you look at the general topography, the Henry Creek on the east, Martin Creek in the middle. And uh Milliken Creek on the west, plus the Yamhill River, they're all kind of down in. And so uh these pieces of property are on a generally on a steep hillside where. Nobody would probably be wanting to develop anyway. And it turns out there's only two floodplain insurance policies in effect in Lafayette. So it uh kind of shows that we don't have a lot of houses or businesses or anything like that actually in the floodplain.
Okay, um so Brandon, is there anything else in like? Not layman's terms, but that you, that Jim hasn't touched base, like.
No, um the model ordinance is probably, it's probably the smoothest for all of it for us. And especially since we don't see any future development. I know there was some concerns at the last meeting. Um hey, what would happen if, you know, the feds changed houses, changed the seats in January? I was talking with David actually about that today, um our city attorney. And he's like, regardless of anything would happen, it's anything that go through court, it can take two or three years for anything on the next administration to kind of defeat this. So.
And the prohibited development is the most restrictive of property right.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Wasn't there some language that if we went with the permit by permit, you wouldn't be able to go back or something?
They, I think they changed that, right, Jim? They mentioned when they were going over some of the the implementation with Oregon. They scaled back on some of their mandates, right, because of the notice requirement times? Because it goes along to another.
Yes, at the uh first uh workshop. Uh when they first presented their early implementation program on July thirtieth. They were saying uh if a jurisdiction does not make a selection by uh December first. Then that jurisdiction would automatically default to the permit by permit process. And then they say, you know, more recently. If a jurisdiction selects an option and is not able to have that. Adopted into their code by December first, then they would also uh default to the permit by permit. But uh in the.
You froze. You froze. I don't know if you can hear us or not, so I'm gonna keep going until he unfreezes. Um so Brandon, my understanding. Are you back, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, oh, I just got a little note. My internet connection is unstable. So hopefully it will get stabilized soon, immediately. So.
Okay.
The current message from Region Ten is that for sure, let them know via email. What the city selects, which option, and then provide some kind of a timeframe. Uh as to when the city thinks it would be able to hold hearings and adopt a an ordinance. To implement the selection. So things of, the immediacy from Region Ten has backed off quite a bit. Because they've heard quite a bit, not only from the federal delegation, senators and. Uh house members at the federal level, but also from. Uh DLCD staff and uh other local state level politicians, so.
Uh I think. Basically, as long as we're moving forward and show a plan, we're good.
Right, yeah, so let them know what we. Send emails to the uh to Region Ten, letting them know, yes, we did this and yes, we did that and.
Uh Council uh Gilgan has a question for you. You didn't hear it because you cut out, but.
Hey, uh Jim, quick question. I'm not sure if this is better aimed for you or Brandon, but. Uh with the MO standard of no net loss of species and their habitats. Uh is that specific to the endangered salmon and whales, or is that all species and habitat?
Uh it's just the endangered ones. On the list of endangered species, the, I think there's eleven. Salmon, uh salmonid species, and then the southern resident killer whales. And of course, we don't have killer whales in the Yamhill, but the water draining goes to the Yamhill, to the. To the Columbia and eventually to the ocean.
I think we're right, yeah.
No, I have a question.
Yes.
Before. I I you said I had three.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I think it was, we're ready to move on to discussion, not cutting you off.
Oh.
Move on from the presentation.
Um under the model ordinance, um are we gonna be the ones? Uh it says uh here applicants of the floodplain development permits would show that they meet the MO standard. So who are they gonna show that to? Is that us? Are we gonna have to have an expert to sit here that? That that gets the applicant to make sure that they're they're fulfilling their obligations of this model ordinance?
Jim, I can grab that one. Um so it's going to be, all the cost is gonna be passed on to the the user. Uh obviously, but we're we're gonna, we're gonna have to find that that expert. So if we go to the model, if we go to that route. We're gonna actually have to kind of facilitate that. That's my understanding, right, Jim? But we don't pay for anything.
But if we are the one that wants to.
Do it, yes.
Yes. Okay, and so.
Or normal, if I could add, for a normal, like down in Sheridan with the amount of floodplain they have. Uh there's a lot of folks who are doing something in the floodplain and they then have to. For all these last decades, they have had to apply for a floodplain development permit. And that is what this new process would be folded into. Because it's the floodplain development permit, when the city signs off on that, that says, yes. You're meeting all the floodplain standards and you can now go ahead and build. But with this process, there's the same floodplain development permit process. But injected into it is this endangered species process. Where the people would have to have a consultant preparing material showing. That the proposed development is not going to result in a net loss of species or habitat.
Okay, I'm um for the sake of time, is there any other question from council or comment? I'm cool if someone wants to.
One of the reasons I asked was is if somebody doesn't like what. They have to, hoops they have to jump through and decide to go to court, are they taking us to court?
I would say because they would be applying to the city for a floodplain development permit. And the city's adopted regulations in the uh Lafayette zoning and development ordinance. Would require certain things to be submitted as part of the application. Then they, I guess, I'm not an attorney, but I guess they would sue the city. I don't know on what basis, saying, I don't want to turn in what I'm required to turn in for the application.
Which we're requiring based on.
So why would we do that?
Why would we do the model ordinance? Because the amount of cost to get permit to permit, permit by permit. Done is a substantially higher cost, correct, Brandon?
Yes, and the model ordinance has already been.
And since we don't have that many applicants.
Correct.
It's not worth.
Yeah.
To be clear, we haven't had any.
Yeah.
Well, and and based on the topography and where the line mods are, the only realistic applicant in the future would be the city itself.
Yeah.
What about if the city expands?
There's not, there's no floodplain.
And there's no worry within the floodplain. We'd have to expand out the other way.
Like like McMinnville's got, I think, like forty seven properties, and there's a lot of properties. I know Newburgh, there's some, so I mean, we we.
A lot of properties, it might be worth spending the money permit, permit.
Yeah, and having a consultant.
But because it might be one of us, the city. Is the cost of permit to get to permit, permit isn't worth the energy.
But for a coastal town like Lincoln City, David, other city, they're doing permit by permit because of all the floodplain they have.
Yeah.
Do that then, if that's not an issue.
Are we required to select one of these?
Yes.
See, you don't have to leave default to the permit.
Yeah, they would default, yeah.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
All right, so I move city council to adopt the model ordinance pre-implementation compliance measure. And direct the city planner to inform F E M A Region Ten by email of the city's selection.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have on the table a motion to approve. Or to adopt the model ordinance pre-implementation compliance measure. And direct the city planner to inform F E M A Region Ten by email of the city's selection. Will you?
Counselor Joris.
Counselor, oh, sorry, I didn't know.
Hi.
Uh Counselor Carswell.
I guess I, because if three people don't say I, then it goes right to the default, so.
Counselor, go ahead. Uh Counselor Kim.
Uh, Counselor Kim?
I'm gonna go name.
Counselor Paulson?
Hi.
Okay. So. Can you read me? It was three to-
Three to two. Three is to two days.
Motion passes three to two.
Is Kennedy too busy to train on salmon and killer whales and become a-
I have a question, it's salmon danger, why are they allowing?
No, certainly, yes.
Well, it said salmon, so.
Yeah, that's another topic.
Yeah.
They just opened up a bunch, I think, salmon over on Columbia, then just that. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll see you next Thursday.
Oh, FEMA. Okay, um, first reading of and the purpose of this is to conduct the first reading of ordinance six four eight amending the Lafayette municipal code seven point nine six zero to seven point nine nine zero. Are there any conflicts of interest? Does counsel object to me reading the ordinance by title?
Is there a question we can find those products? Is that a conflict of interest?
There's nothing wrong, it's legal, it's legal, nothing wrong with it, I think.
It's legal, I don't care, I did that.
No, it's not. I don't think, no. Okay, so does counsel object to the reading the ordinance by title?
Why do you think?
Because.
It's one of my, midnight, I mean, it won't get my birthday.
It was twice. Where are we going? I was practicing just in case, okay. If no objections, I'm going to read this. Okay, this is ordinance number six four eight amending the LMC section seven point nine six zero to seven point nine nine zero relating to marijuana retail sales regulations and taxes, ordinance number six four eight. Okay.
He doesn't like this.
Ask staff for report, Brandon.
Wait, oh, were we having a discussion on that?
No, he just said, okay, he gave me a script to follow and that's what it's like.
I actually, I, I do have a question. I'd like to know why you want the Department of Revenue to collect and not the city of Lafayette.
Like, that's a good answer.
Our amount change if we collect, because why would we give free money to the state?
No, well, it's a pass through just like how we get our, our alcohol and, and gas tax. They already have the setup for it and they, they, they're already paying them every other tax that they can. So, but this has nothing to do with-
The shared, no.
Think that the logistics of the city trying to track sales of business.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and so-
And they have to pay, they would have to pay us like in cash or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Is that-
That's right. They, they collect, they collect all the, uh, the, the privileged taxes already.
They're collecting and saying, okay, now we're gonna divvy it up over ten.
No, no, no.
No.
Lafayette comes to Lafayette, that's all.
The, the, the states, the states share their tax, they disperse that amongst the share, just like the gas tax. We have a particular three percent tax, that three percent comes to the city of Lafayette.
It's true, okay.
As long as it's treated, okay.
They want to get the money, believe me.
Those, those taxes that go in the general fund, just know where they-
Yes, just like the other shared revenue and excise taxes, yes.
Okay, so the next step on this is a second reading next month?
Yes.
Okay. Cool, that was fun. A department reports, Brandon.
Um, unless y'all have any specific questions, I was gonna just kind of go over some notes real quick.
I just wanna know why people have nothing better to do than report about weeds. I read through them, lots of weeds, whole grass.
No, that's not our-
Well, now, while, October fifteenth, um, October fifteenth, I think, or the sixteenth, we can no longer, um, uh, enforce or anything on high grass of weed, so we wait until May now, so we'll, we'll, we'll die down with the high grass. Yeah, so.
During the other-
You understand that, but it's really, it's half the report.
Yeah, because the, the, our, um, uh, code enforcement officer legally, our ordinances require during certain season for fire.
Just want the city to look at, it's understandable. It's a lot of the report.
It is. That's how many citizens had fired.
And we're gonna, um, since we just renewed GoGov, um, I'm going to change the, I'm gonna pull the report from GoGov instead of Excel. So while it's gonna be the same content, it may look a little different. Um, but we'll, we'll see how that goes next month, and if it's a little different, we'll go back. Um, I did speak about the, the ARPA overage, so we'll talk about that next month. I've got a couple ideas, um, we'll bring forth. Um, appetite for additional sheriff's deputy, but that's there already. Um, so as a reminder, um, Oregon Ethics Commission, um, once a term, you'll have to do its mandatory ethics training, it's about two and a half to three hours. Um, so you have to do it once per term.
I just took it, I'm gonna take it again next year.
It's not in person?
No.
I know, it's virtual. So, um, just make sure you sign up, and if you need help with that or facilitating it, just let me know. Um, the, the no left turn, the no left turn signs that were discussed last month were ordered. Um, I put some communication out, uh, late last week regarding what that looks like. And then so, once we deploy those, they'll come back to you all for an assessment in January. I thi, I'm hoping we'll have them installed by the second, which is the first day back. Um, we, when we asked for shipping date, they couldn't give us like a hundred percent, but I'd like to get them up before we leave for Thanksgiving. So then, first day back, we're all hands on deck and kind of going from there, so we'll see how that goes. Um, da, 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 da.
Our Public Works, you, I had-
Oh, yes.
Share who's writing them while we don't have a director.
And, um, while, while we're still in the search of a director, um, since Greg is the public work supervisor, he is the one, um, doing the preliminary report um, before it gets finalized by me. Um, and lastly, um, tomorrow is Bingo, I'll be calling Bingo um, for my fortieth birthday. So I will, so I will be off tomorrow, but I'm coming back for Bingo, so hopefully those who can attend will be there. Um, we have a blast every month. Thank you, Kennedy, for working with me last month. Um, it's good to see Kennedy kind of get out in the community as well. Um, and, uh, I think it's grown now, I think from the first, the first one, it was what? Fifteen, twenty people? And now they're, they're doubling up the tables to now, I think tomorrow they have like close to forty people.
It's also the opening night of Bye Bye Birdie at McMinville High School, so.
Sorry, I'm, I'm gonna go watch the fight.
Oh, yeah, Mike Tyson and Paul.
Okay, well, I will be helping out at Bingo to fill in for one of the Elcat members. Um, any other thing of your reports, Brandon?
If somebody has a question about anything particular, no.
Okay, any council reports?
I'll just say happy birthday, Brandon.
Thank you.
I didn't know that, uh-
Our gift is not getting out at midnight.
I did not know that the traditional fortieth birthday celebration was calling Bingo.
Oh, it is, it's on a Friday night. Okay.
Passion and dedication, sir.
I, I appreciate that.
Mayor's report, um, first off, thank you to everyone who attended the county dinner.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I heard back from a lot of people that it was one of the not nicest, but well done. Um, much appreciation that we got everyone out, not just on time, but early. Um.
Next time, let's keep the heaters on.
Yes, I am sorry, I did not know this turned off.
That's crazy.
Um, so anyway, thank you guys for joining us. I feel that that was a great night to showcase um, Lafayette, and once again, I just am very appreciative that Sherri King stepped up as a, um, speaker. Um, Brandon already mentioned that he and I attended the LOC regional small cities meeting. Um, one of the discussions was how financially are, like, the, the shortfalls?
It's scary, it's scary out there.
Scary for everyone. Um, but a lot of the questions that were asked, Lafayette was the only one that wasn't raising their hand shamefully, that it's still scary, but we're actually sitting pretty responsible and not as scary as some of the cities. Um.
Well, I think I owe a lot of credit to Brandon on that, and how you and Counselor Gilgan resolved the water fiasco and getting the debt there under control, so thank you.
And how quickly counsel jumped on that with you guys to-
Well, it's not just been like me or discount, I mean, like consistently, we've always looked, we've always looked out and we've operated our own fund, how it should be in enterprise funds like a business. And I think as long as you put those in there, I mean.
Yeah, um, and then lastly, Christmas is coming, um, tree lighting is December sixth.
McMinville Twilighters will be there, caroling, so.
Okay.
I hope involved.
And so, um, Christmas, December sixth is, uh, tree lighting, it is over at the community center this year with the idea of doing more of a block party and not on the wet grassy hills of Joel Perkins, the Noel, of Joel Perkins, um.
Have we notified businesses and invited them to come out for that?
Oh, I think LDA was working on that.
LDA has been working on that, and then I have talked to a few of them. Um, no, Elcat is working on it, Elcat, with the connection of the LDA. Um, but, uh, Lafayette Community Church is involved, the, I just heard the PTA has jumped on. So they are, uh, Hamill Dance Studio. Um, and then also December twentieth is caroling and family, or fa la 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 in family night, you do not need to carol to come. Um, but it, we have expanded that a little bit, just to have some small town fun. Carriage rides, um, Shaheen Valley Brewery will be there with their beer bus. Counselor Gilgan will be there leading the carols.
Like last year.
And you can host-
Have we opened that up to other businesses here in town to come be a part of that?
Open what up? Singing?
The caroling one.
No, I, I'm not, that's-
Coming, I, I-
Well, no, it's not Newburgh.
Shaheen Valley, he's at Newburgh. I know he lives here, I know he lives here, he's not a business here in Newburgh, or that's a business at Newburgh, so I'm just wondering why that's been offered there, but not to the other businesses here in town.
Um, it came about from a business meeting with interested entities of doing business in Lafayette, and Shaheen Valley Brewery had approached, um, the city to find a way to be involved in the city.
That's great, I'm, I'm all for-
And I'm more for more people helping out plan it, this is an event that's on my shoulders right now to plan. And so, um, I also know that Shaheen Valley Brewery for OLCC, because they already had a beer truck, they can jump those hoops a lot faster.
Um, again, I think it's great, I just think we should be involving the businesses, local businesses more here on that.
Would you like to team up and help reach out to businesses?
Yeah, okay, I think we should get in contact with LDA, Elcat. Actually, working together would be really beneficial.
I do know that the caroling night, I've told Elcat they don't have, like, they get a break from it for the holiday season, but, um, I definitely support as many businesses as possible. It's the same kind of as the light contest, which is on the fourteenth. When I only, public voting online is, I can only do so much, and I'm happy to have people jump in and help. Um, but yeah, and I would love to see it grow and be more community involved. I had reached out to the food pantry in town to see if they wanted to do a canned food drive and did not hear back from them. So, yeah. Anyway, that's what I have for my mayor's report.
Oh, lastly, um, if, uh, the owner does reach out to you from Shaheen Valley, um, I have that special use permit being vetted by CIS. I sent it probably right before the meeting. Um, so I think we should have that ready to go, so whenever that permit's ready, people can apply to use it, so.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know that, I think the only other one that hasn't is Hamlin Kins, and theirs are, they can only pour onsite right on theirs, but Shaheen Valley's is what they're portable one. But I'm happy to reach out to all the businesses and see if they want to be involved, so I will take you up on that offer to help. And with that, my mayor's report is done, which takes us to thirteen.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
We won't do rule for that.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'm-
Any opposed?